...behind me was wearing sunglasses. Through that dictionary, you know, soft.
Yeah.
No, I'm not saying.
Yeah.
Hit him perfectly right in the sunglasses. Went flying and then he crashed.
Don't.
Well, Ian's the big teacher of the year at Kelford.
The what?
Serious?
No kidding.
Bruce Trow, man.
Oh, my gosh. We're being recorded right now. That's awesome.
I was gonna say, we should've got him for like supper or something.
I never get detention from Bruce Trow. He really did somebody who could help.
His classroom or?
Playing stuff because he was the director for the line.
So he picked you to get a detention so he could get some help, kind of joke. I mean, that was a nice kid, you know how to do it, so. Well, we need more, these two are in the meeting back here at Nicole's. All right, Nicole and Brittany, I think you're meeting with Tracy, tell you.
Oh.
So they're right here, I think, Ian.
Oh, yeah.
Aren't they meeting with, can you want to just check and see, because we gotta get started, yeah?
I'm almost getting nervous. I was like, okay, we're down to four.
Yeah. David promised me we had a quorum.
I did, I promised Amy we had a quorum. Amy would've come. But she was sick.
Yeah, well, Micah said he's freezing, got the chills today.
Yeah, I'm like, what wrong part of that?
Yeah. Should I still come, David? David's like, if you're not feeling good.
Just let the bad, I'm feeling like, uh, no, nothing.
Well, that's what I'm always saying at work, you know, we have to screen people on like, you feeling good today? No fever, chills, nausea, vomiting? Because everybody sees me short of breath and.
Yeah, for sure. Well, hey, troops. It's already started. Yeah, yeah, look at you. I don't know where she put, yeah.
David, when you're seeing this, are you gonna have Nicole read the resolutions?
Yeah. She wants to hike this random, up this random, you want this random?
I think you do it, you call by yourself.
It's a one-stop shop, there is, you don't have your Laura.
Well, we shouldn't have to read every word.
We'll give the box, I'll do whatever.
Oh, I can do that. Will, call this meeting, order. Please rise with the national.
The pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the great singing, no, we won't sing the national anthem. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guest speakers have to sing the national anthem.
Yes. Sorry about that, I get confused. All right, um, roll call, we have, um, Micah, Laura and Amy are absent. And then we also have, uh, Shannon Whack and Chase Japans. Here, thank you, of course, and first, per. All right, agenda. Motion to adopt the agenda.
Oh, go ahead, Nicole. I'll second it.
Call, second by Wendy, you need special news?
I should ask, we already changed it. Well, the only thing is, we, you know, we had to make some changes today for, uh, conversations Friday, but that all got changed, uh, here earlier today, so we should be good here. A way you see it is script.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Public comments and rebel recognition.
Got a few things. Rebel recognition, uh, robotics, Katie Omen today, our activities director, shared this with me. The robotics team spent Tuesday through Sunday in Texas, actually Houston, Texas, and had many matches. They received third place for the connect award, which is given to the team that most connects with their local STEM community. They ended the competition with a rank of thirty-nine out of fifty-six, while some of the teams that competed were from the United States, while other teams were from all over the world. Great experience, I did talk to Joe Keefe, he came back too, so that was good. I always gotta check, uh, but he said it was a great experience, the kids really enjoyed it, so that was good. So, that's that. Um, speech, uh, just wanted to, Kathy Martin said, dear teachers and staff, one more trip to the speech, uh, to the speech season. The following students have qualified for state, so this was before last week, so I'm gonna read both of them. We also have some results from state. Uh, these students qualified for state, Ryan, uh, Ryland Knudsen, Aubrey Lambert, Nora Jones, Abby Jones Shannon and Isaac Gifford. Overall, the team placed second at sections, please congratulate them. Um, and then, please congratulate Ryland Knudsen, placed fourth at state in a very difficult category of extemporaneous speaking. So congratulations to him.
Yeah, good. Extemp speaking, that's where you, it give you like three topics from the news. And it's something like, you know, discuss the war in Chad, or something like that. And then you go through and you're, control your resources and then you give a speech on it in thirty minutes, so it's.
Wow.
Oh, it is a difficult.
That's why she's not lying, when she says it's a very difficult category.
Yeah. And there's a lot of serious individuals that go in there.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
He's a freshman too, so.
Yeah, very, yes, he is, uh.
Three class, that's awesome.
So that's what I got from, and I don't know if you have anything else from anybody else? That's what I got from people today, or this last weekend.
Okay, all right, let's go on to six point one, um, food service report. Ian.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me, good evening, everybody. Just an update. The type of, from our last report, our big thing this year has been our mural and software program. It has, um, really, it's been a fantastic system that we just keep working through. Our point of sale has been up and running. Mr. Jacobson has been fantastic with making sure that synergy of mural edge or talking and going back and forth. So he has spent a lot of time, um, with me, just really making sure that that's all happening. Our online menus are up and going, if anybody has seen them. Cool cafe, well, the nurses can check cart counts and calories, parents can do trades. There's just a whole suite of options there. We are still smoothing out, one of the challenges for the Glendon site is our fifth through eighth have a different serving size on something versus our nine through twelve. So we're really working on how are we going to have that look in that system? So, uh, we will, we will get that taken care of, but just figure through. The big thing for our, um, meals and our online menu is we have over five hundred items that come into the kitchen and all of that had to be entered into a database. So, we've got that in there, it's going great. Our production records are now digital, so that, that makes it nice, we can get rid of this paper and things getting lost. And right now, we're working through getting all of our inventory put in there. So ultimately, the system will be able to pull up orders and really rely on data and previous meals. We also have our online meal benefit application, our free produced or paid. Of those that apply, eighty-six percent of applicants chose to do it online. So, um, we did, we really got a good turnout on that and fourteen percent, um, paper copy. Our next big thing is farm to trade. This year, we partnered with sixteen different farmers out of our community, spending just over eighty-one thousand dollars on local foods. And I listed all of our farmers that we have utilized and what we purchased through them. But the newest partnership that we have is with Evergreen Bakery, which is an Amish family owned, licensed, inspected bakery out of Fraser, Minnesota. So I met with them last fall and we kinda talked, um, the Amish, um, they don't drive, they don't do phones, they don't do internet, so, you know, we really had to kind of pan out how this all would work. But they have a driver, the community has a driver that runs them once a week, um, we do the orders ahead. So he, they have been coming in, they do our sweet breads, they do our loaf bread, they do our cookies, they do our cinnamon rolls. Just more of our bakery, so that has allowed us to actually close out our bakery position because they have, they're filling that gap for us. And when I thought about all of this, I was kinda like, uh, how are we gonna make sure that they keep coming? We don't wanna start something and then it's not working. So, three weeks ago, I approached the Holly School District, Sandy over there, and I said, hey, what do you think about this? And last Friday, they got their first order through them. So now we have the Amish coming to two districts, so hopefully we can just keep them reeled in. They've been fantastic to work, uh, to work with. So, um, we went through, we've done their nutrition and stuff. It's a learning curve for them, just as it is with us, but they are super excited. And when Andy, Andy is his name, when he came last week, they're, they're so excited that they're gonna break ground for a bigger bakery now.
So, uh, somebody from the Amish community comes with the driver here.
Andy does.
Oh, so saving many items, the orders and everything.
Yeah.
I was wondering how that would work then if you.
And there is, it's, it's, it's. On Tuesday, he could, they can go make a call somewhere, so there has been times, um, and they're, they really wanna expand, so they're gonna start growing some, um, different fruits and vegetables for us to use during our summer feeding and into next, next fall. And they have talked, going among their community, uh, to see what, what can they do, can they make greenhouses? You know, what things can their community do, um, to get, to help us more, which helps them? So, I think that we're really gonna make this a long-term working partnership.
I, I think, and I'm sorry to interrupt Shannon, but, well, let's just say this, the, what they are providing us, I've been eating a lot of it. It's just, it's just fantastic. So the food, it's a quality, quality product, so that's the one thing. And so, to try to keep this relationship, I think, is, is really neat. I think it's also a learning opportunity for our kids. Because as Shannon has learned herself, this is, this is how they operate. Which, and there's different, um, ethnicities, there's different backgrounds, but I think just for our kids to learn a little bit about it too. At some point, when he feels comfortable with like maybe sharing their, how they operate, would be cool to, for our kids to really fully understand what's going on.
Yeah, and they are fully licensed, just as our kitchen will be licensed, they get inspected by the health department. And, and so, you know, that's so different from us, but one big difference is they use wood, they have wood fire ovens, so they don't have electricity, you know, and so there, there's a lot of neat things going on there that I'm really excited to kind of bring together and, um, you know, really show that this can work across the board. So, um, on to the next, additional services. So when I think of nutrition services, I don't think of just a breakfast and a lunch service. I think of how can we support the district as a whole, you know, huh? Because when we come in and we support the district as a whole, we're really supporting our kids in the program. So some of the additional things that we have done this year is we did teen meals and we provided one thousand and ten teen meals for students that traveled, um, for the sports. We work with concessions to provide scotchers, salads and sandwiches. Tracy has been fabulous to work with. Uh, we cooked and served for the daddy, uh, Daddy Doordrums. Dilworth did the breakfast for homecoming, Santa, um, for Christmas and Valentine's Day. And we are feeding the Rebel Kids Care kids on non-school days. And they're two, Tracy and her team are, are just fabulous to work with, or their Carolyn is just, just a sweetheart. So, um, summer feeding, we have been approved and our physicians have been filmed. I took a different approach to that this year and we divided it along as a June, July and August. And I sent them out to my employees and I said, if you are interested in all three months or just one month, people come back and they said, you know what, I'll commit to June, I'll commit to July. So we've got them all filmed, but it'll be a different person each month. So, um, we got that. Breakfast in months, participation. So last year, I showed you from two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-three. Now, when you look at twenty-three to twenty-four, um, we have the highest participation this year that since two thousand, since twenty-eighteen, so this is our highest year. We're at seventy percent lunch participation and thirty-four, thirty-four point five percent on breakfast. So we're doing really well. When you combine that out as a daily average, five hundred and thirty-seven breakfast and a thousand ninety-three lunch. And when I look today for the whole year, from the first day to now, we've done just over seventy-nine thousand breakfasts and over a hundred and sixty-two thousand lunches for our kids. So, kudos to the, the staff that works really hard every day to make that possible. So, twenty-four and twenty-five school year. Our big thing is going to be now completing our final step and combining our kitchens. We've really operated two very separate kitchens with four freezers and two chemical paper. I mean, inventory has really been difficult to try and rein in when there's just two different operations. And then, the thing we ran into too is Glendon operates so much more differently than Dilworth. Dilworth is more of a simple serve, two fruits, two vegetables, one hot, one cold. But we, we had more labor over there than we have over here. So by really working this together, it's really made it efficient and balancing where our need is. It's reducing our delivery costs. And ultimately, in the end, it's gonna reduce how much inventory we're having on hold. When I, I was just thinking about this today, I haven't had an order case napkin since I've been here and we're on our last piece. So, yes, so hallelujah, we're getting down there. So, um, Dilworth, so there's been, I've received a couple of questions, you know, in regards to, um, what is doing all the cooking for Dilworth? They are not doing all the cooking for Dilworth. Dilworth is still going to do their simple processes, their heat and serve, chicken nuggets, pizzas, fries, um, hot veggies, but the things that can be more critical, like your raw hamburgers, your hot dishes that have multiple steps, that's gonna come out of here hot over there. We already got a backfire about what, what more is it to add another eighty pounds of taco meat in there? Now, I'm, I'm simplifying this process and really controlling the critical foods out of here, shipping over there. This year, we've, we've spent, uh, we send special diets, the bakery items and the egg salads. Now that we have a warehouse person, we are sending our prime groceries, which is our main cash bond, right here, chemical paper products, and we are now moved over to a homemade ranch. We've been testing it on and off throughout the school year, um, and now we're gonna make that official change over. Bread, milk and produce will still be delivered to Dilworth. We don't get delivery fees and when they have a van, it doesn't make sense for us to haul, you know, forty cases of milk over there when we got a driver going right there. For the rest of this school year, produce will come out of Glendon only because we can't meet the minimum requirement that it has going over there. So we're gonna have it brought here and then we will shift it over there, but next year, it will be over there. The milk, bread and produce. Alacart. Glendon's, I call it the front of the house, is very much set up for two minds to come in and head out. There's really no room to, um, put machines or coolers or anything. So what we've done is we have two vending machines coming in, um, they've been ordered, they're coming in in August. And what's really neat about these vending machines is they are compatible with our software system. So students can use their school lunch account, um, with the hidden, um, there is an extra security step to make sure that Shannon doesn't get Chase's number and I go put it in there. Or they can use cash or credit, but all of our alacart chips, snacks, drinks are gonna be shifted out. What happens in the Glendon group is there's drinks that our five through eight can't have, but our nine through twelve can have. We can put that on the backend and restrict that. So if Shannon's a sixth grader goes over there and tries it, the machine won't vend it out. So, um, it just takes more setup.
What if they put their cash or card in there, can they then ion at that point?
Well, probably, yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah. But through their numbers, no, they can't. By allowing this, uh, the snacks and the drinks going out, this will free up some of that salad bar area that we have. So now we can expand that. And one thing that I get a lot of comments on is they want pre-made salads, they want more sandwiches. Then things can come in, because where we're utilizing that cold space at is for drinks right now. We can shift that out and move these things in, so we can increase what we're offering, um, at the Glendon site with that.
If I can interject too, the other thing that we've heard a lot, and that was Shannon about a lot this year is, kids are hungry before practice, before they get on their bus to go to games, uh, before they get on the bus to go home, some ride the bus for an hour. They can also stop here, punch it in and grab it before the game, before practice, before they ride home. So that's the other piece that's nice, because they're always trying to think, where else can we get food? Instead of run uptown quick, run back and.
Sure. And this is something you guys will fill at the end of the day? So you, we, we control the inventory, we're not paying someone else, so. Sounds like a.
Hundred percent, and what's really, so we're starting with these, but what we can build, if these are successful and they go over really well, they, the same, um, company, which is compatible with their software program, we can get ones that vend cold meals, so students could go over there, punch their number in and get a reimbursable meal for no charge out of this vending machine. So there's, there's room to grow into these, but I wanna start here, make sure things work as they say they're supposed to, and then, and then build on that. So, yeah, we, we got a lot of different options there.
And they got it dipped out of the DGF stuff, so.
So I included a picture in there of that, so you guys can see, they were the former models, they come.
There won't be a monster in the future.
No, there won't. I said, I says, why do you put candy bars in the? We can't have candy bars, but yeah, we'll have one for dinner and then we'll. And they deliver them, Chase, they deliver them onsite and put them in your spot, so.
He's thinking.
I'm not gonna give a full call, yeah. Wonderful.
Yes, last and not least, um, over the last year, there's been a lot of talk about repacking leftovers and freezing them, and this year, I just, I didn't get a chance to get to it. We've just focusing on this and different things, but I have talked with, um, Zoe and Dave and we are signed up, that's starting next school year, we're going to do that. We're going to move forward. Last week, I sent an email out and visited with the counselors. One of my big concerns is moving into this, is how are we gonna protect the identity of the students? They're, they're not going to participate if they think that they've gotta come in the lunchroom. So the counselors are willing to, uh, work with me and we will package them, we will hold them, we will have them in our freezer, and the counselor's gonna be the one that's gonna come down and say, I need five meals, here you go. They're, the student has that relationship with them and then we can protect our identity because it's not a matter of, it's just a matter of who can utilize it, who can, who needs it? And we don't always know that need, so.
We did that, um, with you, and I think it was very successful and a lot of the families were very grateful that they had that, especially going into Glendon where within securities pile up on quicker.
Yeah, and I, and I think a lot of times that, um, you know, a lot of people think, well, it's for free and reduced, but there's that huge group in between that really falls in there that, um, you know, could, could use it just as much. And one thing we have with the kids is if they think that their friends are gonna find out, they're not, they're just not willing to do it. So that's why I've, I've been wanting to find a process that, um, you know, we don't need to know who needs it. That's for the counselor to decide, you know, in those conversations, you know? Yeah, so I'm excited to get that going next year. So, and then, um, the rest of it is just what the vending machines look like and then if you had any questions about the meal repack program and where, what they want to move, where that's going.
Have the benefit applications increased with the, um, online application process?
No, and that's because Minnesota is frequent.
I know, I was just hoping, you know.
I wish, I wish you were ready.
Could we have something where we have like a computer up and ready for people to type it in at like back to school nights and conferences and stuff? Where we can say, you know, we really encourage you to do that, here's, it's available right here.
Gave away Rebel Bucks.
I know.
And that was, well, it, it didn't help. Um, I don't know, what did they, no, what did we do last? I don't remember, I'm sorry.
I think we're, I think right now, we're sitting at twenty-nine point seven and last year, we were at thirty-two point one. So it's, it's changed. The majority of our, um, families that qualify come through direct or through the state, so.
Thank you for all your hard work. I know the parents that sitting at games three nights a week are very thrilled with the changes, that options and you were good, Tracy, so thank you for doing that. Now, now I've heard we have the nicest concessions, we have an angel, I'm not even ashamed to say that, so.
Cause they got some scotch rumors. They were, I bought one every time. Should've bought one, but I didn't.
I saw someone walk in, threw, threw volleyball, they helped like feed him up, I'm like, wow. So, thank you so much.
All right, good, on to six point two, custodial meetings report.
Did you guys get one too?
Thank you guys for that meeting. A lot that goes on in my department, so I kinda just summarized it as best I could. For custodial, uh, total of fourteen custodial employees, eleven full-time, one student, two part-time. Uh, the student is actually planning on coming on full-time in summer, so it'll be fifteen full-time, or twelve full-time employees. Uh, summer cleaning, we're starting to plan for our summer cleaning, uh, classroom by classroom, or I've been talking with the IT department and community ed and Rebel Kids Care, uh, just so we're not stepping on each other's toes and like going back in a room after cleaned it already, so we're working together. Actually, one of our staff members came up with a summer cleaning, cleaning package. We have a lot of new staff, so it's a flip thing and it makes, it dumps it down. So, everything is explained in there. I've been assessing our chemicals, uh, we have a lot of chemicals that we use and it's just too much. And so I'm gonna get it down to four main chemicals, just to save time, money and just easier to manage. Along with the chemicals, I'm assessing our equipment, some, some of the stuff we have, we don't even use or we don't need. And all items that we have our eyes on, uh, I wrote down I'MAP. It helped us clean, uh, bathrooms and a bunch of other things, uh, again, that a staff member made a packet to bring it in.
They did a nice formal presentation to me about the I'MAP and I, and I get it, so we're just trying to figure out if we can make it work. But it's, the bathroom alone, just how this machine can clean a bathroom, it just kinda, I think they need to do it.
In the same time, people, it, it cleans.
Well, the other thing is, if there's a place, you wanna make sure that it's done right, and it isn't always. This machine makes it so much more, yeah, it's just, well, it does a better job too, because it's just, yeah. So, you know, he's twisting, then they, they get, yeah. And so the presentation was impressive, I would say that, that was pretty fun.
It's kinda short and sweet with custodial staff, they're always busy and I appreciate all the stuff they do. If they make this place run without them, it'd be a lot of trouble. Any questions from custodial staff? Maintenance, so since I hired on, uh, I've been able to take on a lot of the bigger projects, which means staff have more time to accomplish some of the smaller stuff, like, you know, some of the plumbing, drywall, lights even, like some of the stuff, let's just push aside, because we didn't have time, we had to deal with some of the bigger issues. With staff, it was kinda hard, so they've been knocking out things left and right. We've been able to handle a lot more repairs in-house, which means less calls and payments to contractors. We've had a lot less contractors coming in. Our boilers, uh, this year, we got ahead of it and we had it serviced right away and gone through and everything. So this year, we knocked out boilers, didn't have very many issues at all with our boiler systems. And hopefully that's a bigger thing. HVAC, um, I know we had a lot of issues with our HVAC systems. I'm working on control, gaining more control, uh, throughout our building. I know some spots we don't have great control, some are hot, some are cold. So I've just been slowly working on that, um, and then servicing them more regularly. Uh, I've been revamping our, we've added, we've added the maintenance schedule, which is, um, goes along with the servicing of our HVAC systems and our boilers and everything like that, just to make sure they last as long as they're supposed to last. Updating our lights, LEDs, uh, if you look in our strategic plan, I've got a list of classrooms that were replacing the LED lights in. We're actually using the LED lights from construction, so really it's just getting electricity to come in a month. Yeah, we've been helping. We have a new grounds position coming up, or not coming up now. We're gonna try to get students to, oh, take care of the yard work. We got the application out there, I've had much luck with it, quite yet, but see how it goes, if not, I'm gonna plan me just in case, so. Summer projects, I only listed a few, but I've got so many in my head. I know we're gonna be taking care of the grass, our football shed, um, need some help. We've got pads out there that are getting eaten up by mice that are very expensive and it just needs some help. I know we got parking lots and signs and, uh, the list goes on. Along with that, organizing our garages and closets and storage rooms. I know we have a lot of leftover materials from construction, our garage is packed full. Try to go through it, inventory it all, see what we can keep, see what we can get rid of or get back and some money for, or use up. And we started the rekeying process in most schools, so, uh, again, with me being here, Ryan's been able to actually sit down and start rekeying. Brian's been able to actually sit down and start rekeying, getting into all the schools. Our maintenance techs are hard workers and have been getting things done, I really enjoy both of them, the work that they do. Then last, oh, do you have questions about the maintenance staff or anything like that? Director, I'd like to try to explain what I do in a day, but it changes in every, every second. I come to work with a plan, and I walk through the door, and I just go. So I just figured I'd list some of the things that I'm currently working in or involved in. Obviously, managing the custodial staff, sometimes by myself having to do the custodial work for shorter person or something like that. Managing maintenance staff, same thing. Along with not calling in contractors, I've been doing a lot more of the fixes of our equipment in-house, so instead of sending our equipment in, I just order the part, we do it here. And through that, the staff has been learning also, and so taking care of our equipment has been much better. And it shows, it makes them leave more care of it, because then they have to do the work to fix it. Our preventative maintenance schedule, like I said, I'm working on that and making sure it's implemented correctly. Going over quotes with the HVAC systems, whatever's wrong with those. Been looking at getting new generators for the schools, ones that can handle the new additions. Our gym floors, refinishing those, a lot of our plumbing. I know in the Ford area, we have some issues with getting hot water here down at this end. Help desk tickets, I don't know if you guys know what help desk tickets are? Okay, so just going through those help desk tickets every day and assigning them, making sure they're closed properly, and then sometimes I'm ending up doing some of them myself, depending on what's needed with them. I have, I got my boiler license in February, so I've been participating in boiler checks in our town, I'm just continuing getting the higher and higher classes in that boiler system, so we're supposed to be of the best they can get. Checking on our HVAC systems, I'm constantly logged into our system, so I'm always looking at room cams, see, looking for alarms, just out of the ordinary things, and when they come, just assessing them and fixing them right away if they need, or getting those fixed. And some of the bigger ticket items I put in here are just roof leak, or roofs, the new and old, so like leaks and what roofs we're gonna replace or need replaced. Our grounds, again, that's just finding a new position for taking care of the grounds. We've been working on a solar project with ideal energy, I don't know if Chairman's mentioned.
That is, I don't know much of anything we do against them, I haven't. So that's in the process, they're helping us write the grant, the money from the state, and Chase and I have met with them a few times, we did get accepted, and so it's a process, they're jumping through with the state, helping us, but they'll be, they don't mount them on your roof, they set them with the weight, so you, doesn't do damage to your roof, it just sits there.
And if you need to replace, they'll come and paint them down.
Yeah.
It's all included.
Yeah, it's all part of the deal, and the state obviously is putting a lot of money towards this, so that's what they're accessing, and our payment is gonna be like eight thousand, nine thousand dollars a year, and then we're supposed to be saving closer to forty-some thousand, fifty thousand, so. And everybody that I've talked to, the superintendent that has it, said, yeah, we wanna add more, because it is paying for itself, it's not one of those deals where it's supplemented and supplemented and preceding, paying for it. This is, everybody I've talked to has had great reports, and they're happy, and they wanna add too, so, yeah, so that's getting started for us. We are a part of the solar field zone in Felton, so that affected us a little bit with what we can get, because we already have some of that, but we still qualify, and we're just gonna make it work, so, yeah.
And then, we recently had the water softener replacement in Clinton. I didn't realize how much damage it was doing until we replaced it. I know the kitchen is very happy with the replacement, so. Also, I've been participating in the Castlay United School Response Meetings. I'm trying to help developing and updating our emergency plans in DGF here.
I know Val's been very appreciative of your assistance in that realm. I've heard lots of positive comments back and forth, seeing it in meetings and stuff, so.
And I'm making them also. And then I'm also leading the health and safety meetings when we have them, and then, just like I said, the construction leftovers in the area, I feel like we should do something with that. Got a lot of it next, but yeah, any questions for me?
No, we do a lot of people for a good one.
Yeah, I tried this before, I was everything.
The one thing I will say in the help desk tickets, obviously, that's a sort of subject for a lot of people in the past, because they would sit there, and that was getting checked out. The help desk ticket list is just about non-existent in the maintenance department now, because they are getting knocked off, and it's in a timely way, and if they aren't being knocked off, it's because they can't, because they're waiting for a part or something. So I really appreciate, I can't tell you how many people keep saying that, oh my God, we turned it in, Chase and they did it today, or they did it in two days, it was done. So, obviously, it makes the system run better, right, and so I just really appreciate that.
And I've also been, when we close out a ticket, adding a response to it, instead of just closing it out, because a lot of people like to hear responses, like, well, what did he do, or did they do, but, so.
Sure.
But yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to six point three, board committee reports. Budget report, don't have, I don't want to spill your pen.
No, it's all, that's okay.
So the budget report, don't have a whole lot to go over, other than, you know, 2025 is gonna be tech year. Twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, still here.
Tell me twenty-five, yeah.
We're getting two percent from the state, as opposed to this year, we're getting four, and so we're, Chan's working with Marcus, and we're trying to fill the budget, and right now, our budget for this year is going well, as you can see from your, your board packet. I don't know if I.
Yeah, I guess, the one thing just for the public to know too, and I shared my quarterly update, so it kinda just, you know, I don't want it to be all doom and gloom, but I also need it to be factual, right? So here's our enrollment, here's our dollars, here's what the state. One thing that has been really out there, that MRA, MSBA, and all these other groups, and, and MB is also showed that, like, this is our ring, or you can do it in graph, however you wanna make your graph, but the funding, yes, was up four percent in, for this year, twenty-three, twenty-four, but the, but the, the unassigned dollar amount was drastically, it was reduced, and the restricted area went whoop, way up, but that's kinda like we talked about, we, you don't have the freedom to always spend on what you maybe need at DGF or, you know, whatever, because it's limited or restricted, and now in twenty-five, it loosens that a little bit, but it's still, the problem is, is the growth in the unassigned is two percent now this next year, and the other ones went up like over a hundred percent increase, and it's just, yeah, unfortunately, we just asked, one of the things we asked our legislators is, give us the money that you were gonna give us, and then DGF will, with the board, elected officials will decide, hey, where should we spend that? And there are some good programs, don't get me wrong, I know there's some reasons why they've passed some legislation, because it is needed, yeah, I get it, there are other places, there are other things that they're passing that. Think we could use it better somewhere else, right? So, anyway, just wanna make sure the public hears that too, we're doing as much as we can with what we have, but it's so restricted that it makes it difficult. Eighty percent of your budget is staff, you can't use that in the restricted dollars, so it makes it harder, so, anyway.
And for the public watching, if you know a kindergartner, ask him if they're enrolled.
Yeah.
Because our numbers are still really low.
Still, they're a little compared, yeah. This time of year, and other years, it's been much better, yes.
Much better, so, if you know anybody in the neighborhood.
Where are we sitting at right now?
I think we're sixty-eight, five?
And our current class is hundred and.
Hundred and thirty, this year's kindergarten, hundred and thirty-four, hundred and thirty, right around there. So there's some people obviously not registered yet, so. We just need them to, that's scary.
We need to find those kindergartners.
Yep.
Want a friend?
Yep, want a friend, that's right.
Want a friend, please, as a kindergartner?
Another question's on the budget report. Personnel report, we've been meeting with MSEA, the air professional custodial maintenance, and other folks in that group, kitchen staff, and we're meeting after this meeting tonight, and hopefully, we're gonna get closer, we're just about done with the language of the contract. And now we're just trying to work through, numbers or goals are still kinda the same as it relates to healthcare insurance, trying to bolster benefits there, trying to get more participation in the healthcare insurance area, so that we can get better rates and better experience rating for our plan. It's pretty much all again. All right, that's six point four, superintendent report.
First one on, there's business manager, talking with Marcus and Brady Marks, so visit with him again today. He has Amanda coming tomorrow from Brady Marks, those two are gonna kinda start to put together a plan. Obviously, he's had some things happen in his life that he's working through as well, but Amanda's coming tomorrow, they're gonna kinda map out his timeline with Brady Marks, and then when is it feasible for him to come on with us, because he has other clients with Brady Marks that they also gotta, so they're gonna kinda nab again, try to set up a roadmap, okay, are we talking June? He thinks for sure by the end of May, and so does Amanda, that they'll get it pretty down then, so then we can move in that direction. So we're working through what that contract may look like with him, and then he will have him full-time for us, which would be great. MC testing, it's just wanna say what's going on, so we had one preliminary, it's all I have so far, is fourth grade reading, and we had forty-six, forty-six fourth graders that improved, that they were, they said it's the biggest growth they've ever seen in Indy, and that's the only one we got a snapshot on, so it was really cool. That either they were meeting, now they exceed, they partially met, now they meet, or they didn't meet, they partially meet, so it was great to see, so that was really exciting. The rest of either state, you know, where they were, so they met, they still meet, but forty-six of the hundred and thirty, and so just an awesome thing. Robotics, we already kinda talked about that, so that's good news there, and congrats to them again on a great season. Resolution, and that was just all these things that we started talking about with the co-op, and just having to make sure that we do this, because we have this May first date for the contract, so I just wanted to make sure, there's a lot of action items that were added tonight that people will hear. We met with those people today and had conversations with them, so they know what's happening tonight, I think that's very important, that, that we met with them, and we did, so that they understood why we're doing what we're doing for the contract, so.
Questions for me, just trying to. All right, pretty good, let's go into seven point one. This is for motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from April eighth, do we have a motion?
So.
Motion by Nicole, a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries on to consent agenda. Claims and accounts, those bills for twenty twenty-four, April twenty twenty-four, the amount of.
Right, ready? One million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents.
Actually, I wanna explain this a little bit, so, way different. So normally, Brittany would've said something like three hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty-five and sixty-four cents. Marcus, remember, has been out, and Amanda did these, and Amanda does all the wire transfers, she added into this for all the payroll stuff, which you guys don't typically see that in the bills. So that's why, because I was going, what's going on, I don't see this, and here was all the wire transfers, and I went, oh, okay, I feel better, so then it was back to three eleven, like we typically say. So Amanda's done it this way in the past, so she thought that's how we did it, so, it's okay.
We do spend quite a bit of money on salary.
We do.
Yeah, eighty percent of our budget.
Uh, yes, so, yeah, this one of you have to kinda really get that real number, right?
Oh, yeah, the trailer's mostly budget reports in here, yes. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
So.
Motion by Brittany, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. On to nine, new and unfinished business, nine point one, policies. This is for the second reading of the following policies we talked about last time. Veterans' preference, four oh five, four oh six, public and private personal data, four oh seven, employee right to no exposure to hazardous substance, four oh eight, subpoena schools, employ four oh nine, employee publications, instructional materials, inventions, creations, four twelve, expensive reimbursement, four fourteen, mandated reporting of child neglect, physical or sexual abuse, four fifteen, mandated reporting of malt trade from vulnerable adults, four sixteen, drugs and alcohol testing. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Lindsay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussions? We talked a little bit about this, but these are generally card grade changes, mostly dates. More discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Nine point two, continuing contract status, this is a motion to improve the list of certified staff members who have now attained continued contract status, and if, see in your report packet, there's a list of people that are on their third year, some folks are on the second year, and those are those that have had three second years in Minnesota school districts, or other states, it's just one little visual, and then continue contract for first years, and those that are in the new, obtained tier four license. So do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Nicole, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. My ears are bad, so, any questions or discussion on that? Some of those groups. Any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Nine point three, this is to approve the contract for Nancy Oster as presented. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Lindsay, do I have a second? Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussions? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same as I, motion carries. All right, this is nine point four, this is a resolution. Authorizing addition of member district Lake Agassian Education Cooperative. Do I have a motion, go ahead, read the resolution first.
You're, you can get a motion in a second, I can read it. I'll, I'll make a motion.
All right, let's see, make a motion, I have a second, second by Nicole. Here's the resolution, there's a few where S is in here. Resolution authorizing addition of member district Lake Agassian Education Cooperative. Whereas the joint powers agreement superseding the previous joint powers agreement dated September eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, between following Minnesota and Pennsyl Districts, member districts, and the Pennsyl District number one forty-six of Barnesville, and Pennsyl District number one hundred and fifty of Pauling, and the Pennsyl District nine fourteen of Eagle and Penderal, and the Pennsyl District number twenty-eight eighty-nine of Lake Park, and the Pennsyl District number twenty-two fifteen of Norbert County, establishing, establishing a joint powers education cooperative, to be known as Lake Agassian Education Cooperative and Joint Powers Education Cooperative Board. Whereas the joint powers agreement for the construction and maintenance of cooperative facilities was entered into on two fifteen, two thousand and twenty, incorporating and restating the joint powers agreement dated September eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, between Lake Agassian Education Cooperative and the member districts, establishing a framework to finance acquisition of real property and the construction, renovation, betterment, and equipping of a new education facility project building, and whereas the joint powers agreement dated September eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, allows for the addition of member districts upon the application of cooperative board subscription to the joint powers agreement, unanimous consent of the current member districts, and whereas the district that applies to become a member district shall also agree to pay the cooperative for a rate of cost of the real personal property owned by the cooperative, the cost of which, or the person thereof, has been assessed against each of the member districts, the executive director will calculate this amount from the records here, she has been charged to maintain. The cooperative district board may then determine the justice proportion to share to be assessed, and whereas on April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, Dilworth Glen Felton Public Schools, by the application request to become a member of the Lake Agassian Education Cooperative, and whereas on April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at the regular meeting of the cooperative board, we're reviewing the application of Dilworth Glen Felton Public Schools to become a member district, whereas the cooperative board recommends that Dilworth Glen Felton Schools be a. Whereas the cooperative board recommends that Dilworth Glenfell Schools be approved as a member district contingent upon Dilworth Glenfell Public Schools' subscription agreement and terms of the joint powers agreement, joint powers agreement for construction and maintenance of cooperative facilities. And whereas the cooperative board is determined that existing member districts have paid for three of the fifteen years for the project building pursuant to the joint powers agreement for the construction and maintenance of cooperative facilities, the cooperative board and the member districts have agreed that upon joining the cooperative, Dilworth Glenfell will not be required to reimburse the member districts in lump sum payments for the member districts' prior contributions to the project building pursuant to the joint powers agreement for the construction and maintenance of cooperative facilities. Instead, in the event that the project building is sold and Dilworth Glenfell is a member of the cooperative at the time of sale, Dilworth Glenfell agrees to reimburse the member districts for Dilworth Glenfell's pro rate share of the fixed allocation and proportion the allocation is set forth in the joint powers agreement for the construction and maintenance of cooperative facilities. The time period Dilworth Glenfell was not a member of the cooperative out of the purchase price of the sale of the project building. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the cooperative board recommends that Dilworth Glenfell be approved as a member district, and Dilworth Glenfell subscribes and agrees to be subject to and follow the terms of the joint powers agreement dated September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, in the joint powers agreement for the construction and maintenance of cooperative facilities, agreement upon signing the resolution. Upon joining the cooperative, Dilworth Glenfell will not be required to reimburse the member districts in lump sum payments for the member districts' prior contributions to the project building pursuant to the joint powers agreement for the construction and maintenance of cooperative facilities. Instead, in the event that the project building is sold and Dilworth Glenfell is a member of the cooperative at the time of the sale, Dilworth Glenfell agrees to reimburse the member districts for Dilworth Glenfell's pro rate share of the fixed allocation proportion allocation is set forth in the joint powers agreement for the construction and maintenance of cooperative facilities. For the time period Dilworth Glenfell was not a member of the cooperative out of the purchase price of the sale of the project building. Upon member districts, unanimous consent and signatures below Dilworth Glenfell shall become a member district of the cooperative, and this resolution shall be attached to incorporate into the respective joint powers agreements. This resolution may be exercised multiple times, each of which, when so executed, shall be deemed to be an original and all of which, taken together, shall constitute one of the same. Resolution may be executed by electronic signature.
Okay, so it is a resolution. Yeah. So we'll take a roll call, Brittany?
Aye.
Roll.
Aye.
Me, aye.
Aye.
Or Shannon, look at you.
Lindsey. Sorry, aye.
Aye.
No one's voting, yes.
Um, motion for the resolution, the resolution passes. Roll three, two, one. All right. Nine point four.
Just a, just a little bit. Because I've got to read all these resolutions.
We have negotiations, so, wondering if we shouldn't, you want to, can you...
You want to run down there.
Or do you have somebody on your phone you can call?
Is somebody taking votes?
Yes.
Thank you, Brooke.
Should I give the time?
As soon as we're, yeah.
As soon as we're done, yeah. Well, I think...
They're not the same.
There's some that are the same, any that are the same, I guess that you could, yeah, that's cool. Yeah, we'll deal with that.
I think you just list the names instead for the same ones.
Yeah, and then, then read the, yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, there's three U L A, and then there's, I should look at. And then there's three non-readables, so you could just read one for those three. You decide, David, I don't know.
Well, that makes sense. We try to be as efficient as possible.
Well, yeah, there's, we compare some of them, maybe there's still more five.
Okay, perfect. So we'll move on to nine point five. This is a resolu- resolution reducing this continued educational programs and positions. Do I have, do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Nicole.
Second.
So, we have several resolutions. This one's number six, form six, form number six. Okay, thank you. Resolution, resolution reducing and discontinuing educational programs and positions. Nicole, we only introduce the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas the school board of independent district number twenty-one sixty-four adopted a resolution in February twelve, two thousand twenty-four, directing the administration to make recommendations regarding imperfection and or discontinuation of programs and positions, and where as said recommendations have been received and considered by the school board. Be it resolved by the school board of independent district number twenty-one sixty-four as follows, that the following programs and positions or portions thereof be discontinued. Part C, early childhood special education. Part B, early childhood special education. Number three, early childhood special education, speech, language pathologist. Number four, school psychologist. Number five, occupational therapist. Right, I think that's, yeah. Any questions or discussions on the resolution?
I feel like, or personally, can I just clarify now that it's passed? And I, I feel like, when I vote for this, it only makes sense to not have these in the board of the co-op. Like, you know what I mean? If we're dissolving, or joining the co-op, dissolving these positions into that. Like, I wouldn't have done it otherwise. Do you understand what I'm saying? I've got to work, but...
Yeah, no, it makes sense, Brittany, for sure. Totally understand, yep.
Doing the previous order, you're...
Yes, this makes it, okay, correct, thank you.
So, you know, against your Dylan, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, because this is different, yeah.
For sure. Any other questions or discussions? Okay, resolutions, what was the roll call, Brittany?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
David, aye. Lindsey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Nine point six, this is for, the resolution proposing placement of a continued contract slash tenured teacher on unrequested leave of absence.
So these three are all the same. Four and twelve, four and twelve, okay.
And...
See that names are right here. So, all right, so I'll read this resolution proposal.
So this is nine point six, nine point seven, and nine point eight.
Yeah, what we'll do is, I'll just read the resolution here, and then we'll, we'll just make reference to that. When we get to nine point six, nine, or nine point seven and nine point eight. Nicole will introduce, Nicole will introduce the following resolution and move its adoption. Be it resolved by the school board of independent district number twenty-one sixty-four as follows, that it is proposed that Michelle Digman, a continued contract slash tenured teacher of said district, be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits at the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, school year effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Said action is taken accordance with the district master agreement pursuant to Minnesota statutes one twenty-eight point four zero subdivision ten.
This goes to, this is item D, so, is the reason for this resolution?
Okay, yeah. Uh, yes, upon the grounds described in said statute, which is specifically as follows, discontinuance of position. Be it further resolved that a notice of proposed placement on unrequested leave, together with a copy of this resolution, be forwarded to said teacher, and then an affidavit of the same being placed in his or her personal file with a copy of the notice and resolution. Right. Any questions or discussion on nine point six? Hearing none, this resolution's sold, do a roll call, vote. Brittany?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
David, aye. Lindsey?
Aye. Who seconded that one? Nicole did the first, did I second, or did...
Lindsey seconded.
Good.
All right, on to nine point seven, this is a similar resolution. And it is for, for the resolution proposing placement of a continued contract tenured teacher on unrequested leave, specifically at fifteen, push, 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 sorry. And we make reference to the same grounds in discontinuance of position as, as stated in form number twelve. Any questions or discussion? A bigger resolution, roll call, Brittany? Nicole?
Aye.
David, aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. On to nine point eight, similar resolution, proposing placement of a continued contract slash tenured teacher on unrequested leave of absence. And this is for Michelle Gilbert. Once again, it's on the same grounds, discontinuance of position. Any questions or discussions on that? Hearing none, this is resolution, do a roll call, Brittany?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
David, aye.
Aye.
Lindsey? Very efficient. Resolution passes. Nine point nine, this is also a resolution, not renewing a probationary teacher. And this is, I think it's over here. David, take this, yeah, perfect. All right, this is, the first one is for Kristen Cadre, she's a probationary teacher. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Lindsey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. All right, the resolution is, Lindsey Leach introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Whereas Kristen Cadre is a probationary teacher in independent school district number twenty-one sixty-four, be it resolved by the school board of independent district number twenty-one sixty-four, pursuant to Minnesota statute one twenty-two A forty-seven division five, and district master agreement the teaching contract, Kristen Cadre, a probationary teacher in independent school district number twenty-one sixty-four, shall be not renewed at the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Be it further resolved that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding the not renewal of the teacher's teaching contract. Okay, any questions or discussion? This is relates to Kristen Cadre. Hearing none, this resolution, roll call, Brittany?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
David, aye. Lindsey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Go on to nine point ten, this is a resolution for not renewing a probationary teacher, and this specific incident is Chris Fosler, probationary teacher. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Lindsey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any question or discussion on this one? All right, we'll just make reference to the resolution for nine point nine, which is read. It's on the same grounds we talked about before, related to Minnesota statute. And the links to Chris Fosler. Any questions or discussion? Hearing, this resolution do a roll call, Brittany?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
David, aye. Lindsey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Go on to nine point eleven. This is for a resolution for not renewing a tier-two teacher. And this relates to Sean Alvarez. Do I have a motion? Motion by Lindsey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Lindsey Leach introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Whereas Sean Alvarez is a tier-two teacher in independent school district number twenty-one sixty-four, be it resolved by the school board of independent district number twenty-one sixty-four that the teaching aspect of Sean Alvarez, a tier-two teacher in independent school district number twenty-one sixty-four, shall be not renewed at the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And be it further resolved that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding the not renewal of the teacher's teaching contract. Any questions or discussions on this one? Hearing this resolution, Brittany?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
David, aye. Lindsey?
Aye.
Resolution is... Okay, so, on to ten point one, the next board meeting will be Monday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, six p.m., here in the DGF community room. And following that, facilities and transportation committee meeting, inclusion board meeting. On to number eleven, adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Motion by Lindsey, do I have a second? Second by Brittany, all those, any questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, meeting is adjourned.
That's fast and quick.
Yeah.
Use your order speed on that one.